This meeting is being held in compliance with the Oven Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the planning board secretary. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a telephone or other device to commonly put in silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by APTV. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
Today is Monday, March 9th, 2020. Councilwoman Alvaun Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore. Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifach.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Kaczak.
Here.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is we have the approval of the minutes for February 24th, 2020, the regular meeting. Anybody have any modifications? Or if not, go ahead.
On page two, there's no date. Exhibit A3, top of the page, about two inches down. Exhibit A3 revised plan stated, there's no date.
Okay, I will have to go back and find the date and I will add that to the minutes before posting them. And then I've also received some comments from Jennifer by email, which I've made some changes and incorporated into.
Is there anything that we should be concerned about?
No, there was just a name correction for material and correction of the maintenance plan, I'm sorry, the building system for, the building management system for the meters.
Okay, okay. All right, can I get a motion for, to approve the changes?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor? Any opposed?
I abstain. I was not here.
Thank you.
Our first agenda item and only agenda item is the City of Asbury Park Affordable Housing Ordinance.
Truth this morning?
Yes, get all three this morning. Michael as well.
Can you raise your hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Can you please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
Elizabeth McManus. M-C-M-A-N-U-S.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning.
Michael Sullivan. S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N. Planning Board Planner.
Please come in, sit, we have plenty of chairs. Okay.
So, Chairwoman and members of the board and members of the public, Beth McManus, our affordable housing planner, is going to give a presentation tonight.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Give a presentation tonight of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Chapter 30, and the creation of new chapter, Chapter 31, Affordable Housing, Nor for the City to Implement the Creation of Affordable Housing in the City of Asbury Park. Turn over to Beth.
Okay, I'm gonna try to do the standing and hope the mic picks me up. I'm pretty short, so.
Let's hope. You might have to squat a little bit, but you know, I'm sure you'll figure it out.
All right, if not, I'll just sit down, but it's, I'm short, it's a little hard to see everybody up on the dais. So, thanks very much for having me. It's been a little while since I appeared before, but we've been doing a lot of work since then on these affordable housing ordinances. Before we, before I get going into the ordinances, I just want to give a little background as to how exactly we got here. So this is not just a matter of the city council saying, hey, let's write some ordinances and tasking me to do so. This has actually been a multi-year process that is now coming to the implementation stage. It started with the 2017 reexamination report where we looked at all of Asbury Park's land use and related policy and included in there was a chapter on housing. And in that housing chapter included a number of goals and objectives, but a few of those are particularly relevant. One of them was to identify locations for inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing. And that's specifically what we've done here. Another one of the recommendations was to go ahead and adopt a housing plan and to seek approval of that housing plan from the courts. That's the format or the framework now required because we don't have the Council on Affordable Housing Act anymore, we have to go through the court process. And that's actually ongoing. In fact, this planning board, in addition to adopting that reexamination report that laid out the beginning of those housing policies and recommendations, you also adopted a housing element and fair share plan in 2019, which took that master plan recommendation and expanded upon it to maybe 50 pages or so. And in that housing plan, it goes through and it addresses every single ordinance that we're gonna talk about here. It identified locations for inclusionary housing and gave some basic recommendations for what that zoning should look like in terms of density or building height or the general idea before that. So that housing plan was adopted by all of you. It subsequently been endorsed by the council. Endorsed meaning, it's not an approval like the planning board gives, but it's, it's an acceptance of the plan and approval for it to be submitted to court. And now, we're at the implementation stage, where you have your master plan recommendations and now we're at the point where we're gonna start regulating, consistent with the master plan. And so that's what each of these seven ordinances does. It takes that recommendation and essentially proposes it in a codified form so that the council can adopt it and bring it into your body of laws and ordinances so that you can then enforce it the next time you have a development application that's, that's applicable to one of these locations or otherwise applicable to affordable housing. So before I get into the ordinances specifically, are there questions about the process and what got us here, why I'm, why I'm here before you tonight?
I have a couple of questions. I've looked at the proposed ordinances and the first thing that jumps out to me is, what is the city's fair share? Or if, if that is not a finite number, how's it calculated?
Okay, so, the city has, the city is in a very unique circumstance. Because of its, because of its unique circumstance, you have a very special affordable housing structure. So municipalities in the state, you have three, you have three types of affordable housing obligation. And I'm gonna go through each of these for Asbury. The first one is your rehabilitation.
If, if you're gonna cover that later on.
I'm not. That's a, that's a perfect, it's a perfect time for this question. The city has rehabilitation obligation. That is an estimate of the number of existing housing units in Asbury Park that are deficient and are occupied by low and moderate income households. So when I say deficient, I mean like there's, there's a problem with the building system. It might be lack of kitchen or plumbing facilities. It might also be a measure of overcrowding. Now, this is not somebody that has driven through Asbury Park. This is simply data that's based on the census and the American Community Survey. It's a number that's calculated for every municipality across the state. That number is the only obligation in Asbury Park that you guys have. It is a total of 290 units. Thank you. So that is your rehabilitation obligation. That's actually gonna be met in a way that is not gonna be covered by these ordinances. That rehabilitation obligation is gonna be satisfied through the city's existing use of CDBG funds in this, in the ongoing rehabilitation program. The other two components of your affordable housing obligation are collectively called the new construction obligation. It's your, your prior round obligation. It represents the number of new affordable units that are required to be constructed generally from 1987 through 1999. That's called your prior round. That number is actually zero. Your third round obligation from the years 1999 through 2025, the second component of your new construction obligation, that's also zero too. So, these ordinances are being done not to meet a large affordable housing obligation like, like a lot of your neighbors are, but instead, it's being done simply for, to better achieve land use and housing goals contained within the reexamination report, the housing plan, and city council as a whole.
Okay.
All right.
Going forward, I have, you answered I think most of, about the 20% obligation that we're putting into, into the ordinances. And I was, I was questioning whether that number was, you know, in the ballpark, but I think you've answered that. You know, maybe later on when something comes up, I may have another.
Good. Yeah, I mean, one of the, one of the really interesting things about Asbury Park is that you guys are adopting a housing plan not because, not because you are required to create X number of affordable units between now and 2012 and 2025 in order to meet your constitutional obligation. You've taken all of these steps and potentially these steps before you tonight in order to create a more inclusive city and to maintain the ability for folks of essentially all incomes to live in Asbury Park. So it's a little bit different of a goal. You're doing it because, if you don't mind, because this is a policy that is desirable in Asbury Park, not because the court is telling you to, in essence.
Right.
So with that, let's, let's talk a little bit about what we've got. Like I said, we've got seven ordinances and I'm gonna go through each of these, but quickly, I'm taking a look at your B District, which is actually your, your B1 and your NCD district. We've got Main Street redevelopment area, the Deal Lake Drive area, and your existing R3 district, there's an overlay zone that's being proposed. We also have a tweak to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan, as well to the CBD redevelopment plan. And then we have two ordinances that apply citywide. These are the only two that apply city, citywide. It's the mandatory set aside ordinance and the affordable housing regulating ordinance. So, right here on the screen, I've got a copy of your new zoning map. This is.
Excuse me, Beth, do you have a document that we can enter in each phase of these into as exhibits for the record?
I can provide that to you.
Well, the map was part of the packet that was given to.
So let's take the packet and mark it as a city exhibit.
Thank you.
And including the resolution from the mayor and council that referred the whole thing to us.
The resolution.
Okay, it's in, it's included?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, the referring resolution is not included.
Hold on, I, that I do that?
That's the enabling resolution that asks us what to do. While we're doing that, the board, I don't know if the board does or does not understand this, but I'll give it to you anyway. Criteria for reviewing an ordinance, both are the same. We have to identify any inconsistencies with the master plan or other matters we feel like identifying. First one is the ordinance, ordinance review is 35 days to complete the task. Amendment to a redevelopment plan is 35 days. That's it.
And where are we in this process?
Where, this is our review within the 35 and 45 day timeframe, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
So our job is to identify the plan, whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the master plan, and identify any inconsistencies if any.
Okay.
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 Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So, in any case, this is your revised zoning map put together by the city. And it depicts some of the, the existing zoning with the changes proposed as part of each ordinance. I'm gonna go through each of these. So first, let's start with the B District. Now, as I said, this is not an existing B District. Instead, this takes the recommendation from your 27, from your 2017 reexamination report, which was to essentially update, modernize the permitted uses in these districts, combine the NC and the B1 district into one, or the B2 district, excuse me, into one zone. And so that's precisely what we've done. We've also taken that master plan recommendations and incorporated the housing plan recommendations, which, which echoed the master plan and took it a step farther to specifically talk about providing a 20% set aside. And so, what this ordinance does, it, as I said, it combines those zones into one new B District, as you see highlighted on the map. It amends those permitted uses, including taking the permitted uses from both of these zones, essentially combining them with some exceptions. There were some recommendations in the 2017 master plan reexam that have been incorporated, such as adding urgent care as a new conditional use, eliminating bars, and having Asbury Avenue be the focus, being the location for permitted arts district usage, such as theaters and museums, for example. It also increases the permitted residential development on the site. And that was perhaps one of the biggest barrier to creating affordable housing in these areas. Your existing ordinance limited the residential uses to only four units above a first floor commercial. And so what we've done is lifted that and applied a maximum density of up to 40 units an acre. We've also increased the building height from maximum permitted from four stories up to three stories. And in exchange for.
Excuse me, Beth, you said four stories up to three?
I'm sorry.
Three.
Four stories from three stories to four stories. Sorry about that. And in exchange for this more permissive zoning in terms of permitted uses, density and building height, we've applied an affordable housing set aside of 20% low and moderate income housing. We also have a built-in incentive for middle income housing, which gives an additional five dwelling units per acre in exchange for an 8% set aside of middle income housing. And for folks that may not recall, middle income housing, while it's not credit worthy affordable housing, it doesn't get you credit against any type of affordable housing obligation. It does allow you to, to bridge the gap between low and moderate income housing units and market rate housing units. Middle income has an income restriction of between 80 and 120% of median income. So it allows for the city to reserve housing units that don't, that go beyond low and moderate income so that you can truly provide housing for, for all incomes and avoid the, the trap that I think some municipalities are gonna fall into of providing housing for folks that meet the low income or moderate income qualifications and those that are wealthy enough to buy a new home in the town. And so this middle income will help you bridge that gap. But, as I said, it's an added incentive. It is not fundamentally required anytime somebody does a, a mixed use building within this new B District. And so in addition to granting more permissive zoning and updating the permitted uses, in addition to requiring the affordable housing, we've also added some building and site design requirements to, to give minimum standards for anybody that constructs new development to essentially ensure that there are no large blank building walls, that rooftop equipment is well hidden and so forth. Just some basic standards to ensure that, that buildings have some, some basic architectural character in town. The other thing that we've done is we've also eliminated the parking requirement for affordable housing units. So that's an additional incentive that's been given to, to property owners in the area to create affordable housing. It actually reduces their parking requirement a little bit as well. And so that's, that's the B District.
But that, just to go back to the parking piece, is that that's only, let's be clear that that's only for those units?
Yes.
Not for?
Correct.
The whole building?
No, no, if you, if, let's say you build 10 units and two of them are affordable, it's only those two that are really from the parking requirement, not the whole 10.
Okay.
And can we ask questions by, like each one, or do you wanna switch?
I'm comfortable however you guys are comfortable.
Yeah, well, let's go while we're going through it.
Okay, 'cause I'm sorry, 'cause my, some of my questions, I'm, aren't, cross reference with this, but with some of the documents I looked at, and so I might be confused. But regarding this, I think it actually carries over to another one too. This is actually not related to affordable housing, but the design standards that you mentioned. In the B District, and I think one other place where I saw the design, it says, I don't have the language in front of me, but there is a thing about coordinating roof materials with exterior materials or something like that. And I was wondering if we can add, or if it's possible to add something. I was worried that it would, could be considered exclusive of sustainable approach, like green roofs, white roofs, photovoltaic systems, even though you could say it, you could argue that it's not.
Right, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think the section you're referring to is a statement or a requirement that says, roof shape, color, and texture shall be coordinated with the exterior materials of the building's facade, facade, excuse me.
Correct.
And your, I get, your concern is, would that prohibit certain green roof, blue roof, solar panels, essentially?
Well, one concern is, would it prohibit, but, I mean, I think you could make the argument it's not prohibitive, but is it in any way encouraging what's in the master plan of, in other words, can we add something that says, like sustainable roof strategy, such as planted, white, or photovoltaic systems are encouraged, without it make, because there's a few places where the master plan says we're promoting these green approaches, but then you might come in as a developer and say, well, this is, I'm not doing this because your thing, your ordinance says, don't do that.
Well, so one, yes, I think fundamentally the, the city council can encourage things like that in its ordinance. Whether or not you need to in this location, I'm not sure. If the city isn't, is interested in doing a larger sustainability ordinance to promote such features, not just in the B District, but elsewhere or perhaps citywide, I, I think that would be a better place rather than piecemealing regulations throughout. But I don't think that, I don't think that not including an encourage, an encouragement type statement in this section hampers the planning board's ability to address this when a developer comes in. Because you still have the ability to point to your master plan and say, developer, we are clearly encouraging A, B, and C. How are you gonna respond to that?
Okay, and there's no value in reinforcing it, like across?
I'll tell you why not, because we put this in as a hard standard. Other than we scrub, make sure the section didn't have soft subjective language. And the word encourage is tough for when we get a development application come in to evaluate whether it's a variance or not. So everything in here is, in this section is a hard standard. And again, what Beth said is that, you know, it, when an application comes before the board, you can evaluate it based on the master plan, whether they have it or not, but I'm hesitant to put it into the section because we made these not design standards that are waivers, but design standards that are variances.
Mm-hmm.
And this is again, something we can explore more in when we do the global zoning amendments because like, Beth stated, I believe it would, it should line a different type of section.
I understand that too. Part of my worry is that because of the timing, that more and more projects keep coming through, and I'm worried about the timing, that it gives it more, it could be more effective faster than us.
We plan to have the first phase of zoning amendments before this board and, at the latest June.
Is that, that's what we're working on right now, correct?
Yeah, right.
So that's, that's the one that we, we're doing now. We can ensure that that says it appropriately and that's going to be coming through, like she, like Michelle said, very, not, not as long as it would take to put a whole new ordinance through. This is for, for the zoning that we're already talking about.
For the affordable.
We're already in the process of, Michael, if you want to.
Well, I do want to talk about the implications though. If you're adding these as encouragements within a zoning that's meant to incentivize affordable and middle income housing, those additional measures could be perceived to be a cost generative measure, would be, could be antithetical to the production and the creation of the affordable units. So it's something that you want to think about and that probably was thought about before it came here.
But meaning that one's exclusive of the other?
It's not exclusive, but you know, you know, encouraging or requiring, if you required solar or green roof, that's very expensive stuff. I mean, solar power's not as expensive as a green roof.
But a white roof, like if you require, I think it's different than, I wasn't saying to require anything.
But that's the thing, this is a section of requirements.
Okay, so.
This is a zoning, this is a zoning section.
That's why, again, I think we should explore, we should explore it and it go in its own section when we do the global as, as a site plan level review.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jen, your concern was just that we don't prohibit them through the language, right?
Correct, correct. That was my concern, was that if there wasn't, if it wasn't brought up as an issue at this point, I didn't see how, unless someone here brought it up, like I didn't see why anyone would do it. You know what I'm saying? So I, I understand what Michelle, Michelle's point about the variance aspect of, I understand, I understand, I have some concern that as long as it's coming, in a global sense.
Yeah, and I think if, if Asbury Park has an ordinance that it puts all of these sustainability requirements and encouragements in one location, I think you'll be better served having all of it in one location and having the same standards apply to similarly situated developments across the city, rather than having the B District be different than the CBD redevelopment plan, for example.
Right, and I didn't mean that, I mean, I had the same comment for the deal, anyone where I saw the design stamp. So if that's the way to address it, that's more effective.
Yeah, I think so. And it's gonna, and I think we're gonna have the same answer for, for every district because you'll see similar design standards for a couple of these places.
Yeah, and I did, and that was my, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't setting something up that's saying, if you're doing affordable housing, don't, I mean, put these things aside because the priority is affordable housing, which it is, but it's not mutually exclusive as well.
This is more, we recently had, this, it's a minor thing in the scheme of things. We had an application where the, the penthouse on the roof was an afterthought and the design didn't match any of the building. And this is more along that line. It's, it's very mild. But I, again, like, clearly we, we know that, you know, we should be looking at this when we look at the global amendments.
Thank you.
Before we move on, just a comment. This does not specifically relate to the change in the Deal Lake Drive overlay or the new B zone, but I see two areas on the zoning map that are incorrect.
Okay. Point them out.
Okay. Up here in the right-hand corner, you see that green, where the, just above the box, top right-hand, right there.
The P1?
No, yes, the P1, I'm sorry, P1. Those are residential units. That's where Deputy Mayor Lefredo lives.
This was a, this P1 came off the original map.
I think that's consistent with your existing zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
There's no park there, it's, those are residential units.
But I think based on your.
Well, if you're gonna do a map.
But I think based on your map, they're, they are indeed located in the P1 district, right?
No, they're, they're not park lands.
I know, but I'm saying that this was a change we didn't touch. This was in the, the base zoning. The only amendments that went forward with this were potential thresholds.
What I'm saying, Michelle, is that this, somewhere along the line, I don't know where it occurred, that designation, P1, represents a park area, which is not a park, it's residential housing.
I'm gonna look into it.
Okay.
Go back to other, you know, go and see how, I'm gonna, I'll look into it.
Okay, and the other one is, it's not shown on this particular exhibit, but if you extend Deal Lake Drive.
How about here?
To, to the east. The area north of Deal Lake Drive is not in the waterfront redevelopment area.
What do you mean?
What area?
This north of Deal Lake Drive.
The original map shows the water, the northern boundary of the waterfront redevelopment, the light green area.
Mm-hmm.
You see where it goes to the borough, the village of Lock Harbor? On the original drawing, it goes straight to the boardwalk. It does not go, it does not include that triangle and it does not include that area.
Okay, we will correct that.
Okay.
Thank you.
While you're doing it, may as well complete the whole thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
I say while you're doing it, may as well.
No, yes, that, yes.
I, I think for the record, there's two other zoning map changes that need to be reflected. I think the scattered site and the water fill, waterfront infill areas are missing as well from the zoning map, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, for the B District? Okay, let's talk about Main Street. So Main Street is one of your redevelopment plans. It's an existing redevelopment plan. And as you can imagine, it covers essentially Main Street and some of the properties on either side. And this is a, a much more simple change compared to the B District that we just went through. This is an amendment of your existing Main Street redevelopment plan to increase building heights from four stories. to increase building heights from four stories to five stories, but there is an exception to that. That redevelopment plan covers this particular property, the municipal complex site, that permits eight stories, that is not proposed for change. So that existing permitted eight-story will remain. We are also changing the redevelopment plan to require a 20% set aside of low and moderate income housing, except for again, this property where 25% will be required. Because the city owns the site, you have greater control over the ultimate pro forma and the financials of the site, you can accommodate a higher set aside, and so that's precisely what we've done. And then we have that same incentive for middle income housing, where an additional five dwelling units an acre will be granted. And so essentially, this is a, as I said, it's pretty simple. We're granting one additional story in height and requiring a 20% affordable housing set aside, except for 25% in this location.
Again, with the building height they're changing, I'm sorry, you're changing it from stories, but are you changing the physical dimension, foot dimension? And the reason I ask is that because in the CBD, we've had several applications where the extra story was permitted, but we had to grant a variance for the height. Excuse me, so if we're gonna change, why don't we change that?
I actually, I kept the presentation simple, but yes, we did increase the number of feet permitted as well. So it went from, from four stories, or excuse me, from three stories, 35 feet, to four stories, 45 feet, or from four stories, 45 feet, to five stories, 55 feet. So we've increased it by one story and 10 feet.
Because of the existing conditions on those buildings with the extra height of the first floor, generally, and some instances of the second floor, maybe you ought to add another couple of feet, something to look into?
I'm happy to make the change if that's what the planning board recommends. I was just simply trying to add one, keep the building height to the minimum required to accommodate an additional story.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on Main Street? Okay, let's talk about Deal Lake Drive. So this is the area as it's aptly named, it's along Deal Lake Drive, but it's more specifically, it's within the R3 district between Emery and Webb. And so what we've done is we've taken this existing R3 district and amended the zoning to provide an incentive for inclusionary housing. So essentially, we have created not just a change to the zoning, but created an overlay zone. Now, an overlay zone is essentially optional zoning. It's an additional optional, option to the property owner or to the developer, where the existing R3 zone remains in place and may be utilized, or you as a developer can go ahead and utilize the new overlay zoning, which gives additional height and density, but it also requires a 20% set aside. So in this case, we've amended the zoning to allow for an increase in the building height from five stories to eight stories, and an increase in the residential density from 50 units an acre to 60 units an acre. And as I said, in exchange, we're requiring a 20% set aside of affordable housing with that same incentive for middle income housing, giving an additional five units an acre where there's 8% middle income housing provided. And then in addition, we also have some of those similar building design standards, although they're obviously geared towards residential development in this location. And just to be a little bit more specific, how this zone is amended, in addition to creating the overlay zone, we've actually changed your conditional uses. So if you look at the ordinance, one of the things you'll see is that multifamily buildings at five stories was, or actually at a larger height, was permitted as a conditional use. We've eliminated that conditional use, so that if somebody is inclined to build a bigger, larger multifamily building, they must do so through the inclusionary housing standards. Okay?
Can you, would you mind just going through the, once again, with the five stories to the eight stories, how, what are the feet?
Yeah.
The differences in feet?
Yeah, I mean, so as we go through this ordinance, so right now, the ordinance permits five stories, period. There's no, there's no foot, no building height in feet that's set forth. In the new ordinance, it sets the maximum building height at eight stories or 90 feet.
Good question. So if they choose to just build a five-story building, they're not required to include 20% affordable housing? It's only if they go to eight stories or increase the density?
No, if, right now, they are permitted to, if they want to build a multifamily building, essentially, you're required to do the 20% affordable housing. All we've done is eliminated the option to do a fully market rate building. And instead, if you're gonna move forward, if you're gonna build a new inclusionary, excuse me, a new multifamily building, you've got to do so with a 20% set aside. Okay, let's talk about Springwood Avenue. So this is again, another one of your existing redevelopment plans. This is actually very different than what we've done in some of your other, in the areas that we're gonna talk about. Usually, I'm up here talking to you about what we're giving to the developers in exchange for taking something, giving them density, taking some of their market rate units. Here, this is a redevelopment plan that had two types of affordable housing obligations. The first one was a 20% set aside, essentially the same 20% set aside that I'm talking to you about in the B district and Deal Lake Drive and so forth. But it also included a affordable housing requirement for the construction of non-residential developments. And that was consistent with the state's old, COA's old gross share standards from circa 2004 or so. Those rules have actually been overturned by the courts. So what we're doing here is we're eliminating that non-residential affordable housing requirement. We're basically bringing your redevelopment plan in conformance with state standards and the applicable case law on the topic. So that's, that's really the only change. There's an additional statement in there that clarifies that a non-residential development is gonna be required to pay the non-residential development fee. Quite frankly, that's required whether our redevelopment plan says it or not. But we just wanted to provide a little additional clarity there for anybody that's wondering. So as I said, the only change here is really we're taking away a standard which is not enforceable anymore. Are there any questions? Okay, let's talk about the CBD, the Central Business District. This is our last area for where we're creating amendments to your zoning ordinance to incentivize the creation of affordable housing. So here, this is structured a little bit differently. A developer is required to provide 15% affordable housing only if he goes ahead and takes an additional building height of 10 feet, and he's able to eliminate the affordable housing parking requirement. Let me, let me reverse the way I've said that. Developer is given 10 feet of additional building height, and he's given relief from the affordable housing parking requirement. And in exchange, he's required to provide a 15% affordable housing set aside. So if they come in tomorrow with a development that fully conforms to the redevelopment plan as adopted today, there is no affordable housing requirement. However, if they come in and they want to utilize the additional 10 feet in building height, they can do so if they provide a 15% affordable housing. And they'll also be relieved for that affordable housing parking requirement. So the same thing is in the B district. It's not all of the market rate units that are excused from providing parking, it's only the affordable units. I know I presented that a little awkwardly in the first segment. Are there any questions on that?
Should they go to 20 feet, you have to do 30%?
No, I wish I could, but no, I didn't do that.
It's not cute, too.
No. So that's the last area. The next ordinance I want to talk to you guys about is called the mandatory set aside ordinance. This is something that's being adopted in municipalities around the state. And essentially, it is citywide, and it is intended to capture any affordable housing opportunities that we're not thinking of. So something that might pop up in a year from now, three years from now, 10 years from now. So if a developer is granted approval or permission in some way for an additional five units beyond what they're currently permitted to build, then they are required to provide a 20% affordable housing. And that approval can come in the form of a variance, a rezoning, or redevelopment plan. It does not require the planning board, zoning board, or the council to give approval to any project or any request. But if you do, you've got to apply a 20% set aside. So if, I know you guys are the planning board, but if we can take a zoning board example, it's straightforward. If I have a developer that is permitted to build, let's say, 20 units under the current zoning, if they request a use variance, say a density variance, and it would allow them to go from 20 units to 30 units, that increase in more than five units being permitted beyond what they're currently permitted is required to trigger that 20% set aside. So at that, with that variance.
For the whole project, right?
Yes, the whole project. So with that variance comes with the affordable housing set aside. And it would be the same thing if a developer approached the council for a change in the redevelopment plan, or perhaps a new redevelopment plan, or rezoning. Once they get that permission to do the additional five units, the project is subject to a 20% set aside. But again, the city is not required to give it the approval or the consideration that's been asked.
It's not part of the criteria for the variance.
No. The municipality is not required. If I, I would expect a developer who's gonna argue it that they're helping to provide affordable housing in the city, but it's not, it doesn't change the C criteria or the D criteria.
Right, okay.
Okay? So then the last ordinance is your affordable housing regulating ordinance. This ordinance does not address creation of affordable units in any specific location in the city. Instead, all it does is ensure that the affordable units that are created are done so properly and that they're eligible for credit. So all of your low and moderate income units, if they're created pursuant to this ordinance, will be eligible for credit in the future. So it addresses things such as distribution of very low, low and moderate income units, making sure that you have the correct number of each. Same thing with bedrooms, affordable units have to provide one, two, and three bedrooms. And so it sets that distribution forth in the ordinance. You're also required to market the units appropriately to ensure that folks from the entire region know that affordable housing is available. It requires that the affordable units are built in conjunction or in proportion to the market rate units. That's called phasing, to, because what you don't want is a developer to build all of the market rate units and then, oh, they ran out of money, can't do the affordable units. So we make sure it all gets built at the same time. Sets forth maximum rents, maximum sales prices, income limits. And then it has monitoring requirements, so that the city is keeping track of what's being built and what type of a unit it is. Is it a low income, two-bedroom unit, is it a moderate income, one-bedroom unit, and so forth. And so this ordinance is actually similar to what's being adopted around the state as well. All municipalities that are creating affordable housing are adopting similar ordinances to make sure that the units that you do get approved are indeed eligible for credit in the future.
Beth, what happens is the developer says, well, I don't want to do three bedrooms, but I'll add an additional one and two bedrooms, so I don't have to build three.
Ultimately, it's to the discretion of the city, but I would, I would recommend against that. Three-bedroom units are required, they are historically the least desirable unit from developers, but they're, they're often really important to the population that's in need of affordable housing, because it provides true family housing.
So, I'm sorry, so the city would not get credit, you know, in the event that?
The city will not get credit for the units that should have been three-bedroom units and were not.
How do you know that they should have been three-bedroom units?
Because, because there's certain distribution. So let's say you have 10 affordable units in a project, that you're required to have, you can have up to two one-bedroom units, you have to have two three-bedroom units. And then the remaining six can be two-bedroom units. So in that scenario, if you had a developer, let's say he built four one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units, you're gonna only get credit for eight of the units, because those two three-bedroom units were never created.
And that, that's not something they can come in for a variance or anything like that, that is just, that's just.
I, I think that they can ask, I think the board has the jurisdiction to grant the relief. I just don't recommend that you do so.
Oh, no.
Then you're like, kind of stockpiling.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Then you have to get those three bedrooms. Okay, you gotta do all three bedrooms.
Yep.
I had a question about, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. There is somewhere, and again, I'm sorry, I'm not, I was referencing something that was on page seven, but I'm looking here, and I don't think it was page seven, where it says, the design must be integrated. And then it says, except when permitted by planning board or zoning board. Yes, see, so that would be, yes. So we're at, it is on page seven, and it says, design. And it says, in inclusionary developments, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay, so when we're talking about design, is that what you were just talking about? Or you said that's within a, within a building, you can't group all of the affordable housing in one part of the structure?
So this is different, but what this says is, oftentimes developers come in and maybe they want to put all their affordable units on the ground floor. They want to put it in the least desirable location in the building. And so what this particular provision on page seven states is, no, you've got to integrate the affordable units throughout the building unless otherwise permitted by the planning board or zoning board. So typically, what I would recommend is that the board get a copy of the floor plans or some other documentation that indicates where the affordable units in the development will be, so that you can judge compliance with this item.
In New York, there was a building, I think like in Soho or Tribeca, where they built.
They had the corridor.
A separate entrance, where they did the affordable housing in the main.
Yeah, I remember that. And yeah, and that's, that's exactly what this addresses.
Okay, that's what I was assuming, but then when you just said that part about it being grouped till the end or whatever, then I thought I was confusing matters.
So that's, that's a little bit different. So in that, that's phasing, where I said you've got to build the affordable units in proportion or along in the same schedule. Because I don't want, I don't want that exact circumstance, which has happened, where developers, they get maybe partway through a project, but none of the affordable units are created. And it creates a massive issue for, I mean, it creates a lot of issues, but it creates a compliance issues for the municipality, because you don't have the ability to compel the creation of those affordable units.
So that's A. Is that A?
Yeah, it is, actually.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding each.
So we don't have the, the city doesn't have the ability to compel it? If it was part of the original development plans, and then it gets to this point where they haven't built it?
Yeah, because what happens is, the phasing requires that, if you look at page seven, there's a schedule. But what it states is that 25% of your market rate units, or 25% plus one unit, can be constructed. But at that time, you need to have 10 of your affordable units constructed. And by constructed, I mean, it's, it's based on a certificate of occupancy. So they're not gonna get additional certificates of occupancy until that 10% of the affordable units are done. And so that's your leverage, that's your ability to compel the developer to actually fulfill his responsibility with the affordable housing.
Before we leave the exhibits here, on this particular exhibit, we talked about very low and low and moderate income units. In your prior exhibits, you talked about low income, not very low. Should they be included?
So very low is, I'm being a little bit more technical on this slide, but very low is a subcategory of low income units. So when I, when I'm talking about low income in, say, the B district or Deal Lake, it includes very low income. And so when you get to this, this particular ordinance, that's where everything is spelled out. The very low income is spelled out and identified as a subcategory of the low income.
Yeah, well, my concern is somewhere along the line, somebody will take a look at this particular document and say, well, you made a distinction of very low and low and moderate income units. Prior to that, in the same document, you only talk about low income. So maybe the low, very low income units do not apply.
I, two things. So one, I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
And, but for two reasons. One, I'm not worried about, because all of your affordable housing, all of your ordinances are pointing towards your affordable housing regulations, so for one. For a developer that sees the trigger, I have to provide affordable housing, the next step for them is to look at the city's affordable housing ordinance, which specifically spells out the moderate income, low income, very low income. But I do actually have a reference in the zones themselves to the very low income. I, I'm not trying, I'm honestly trying to leave out some of this really technical detail just for the presentation, but there is a reference in, say, the B district and the Deal Lake district.
But it's in, it's actually in the ordinance itself.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's spelled out.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it does, it does.
Yes.
In the definition. I just didn't want to get us in a situation where one document says one thing, one document says something else.
No, it's a, it's a good thing to work, to look out for.
Along those lines, this is, may be completely irrelevant, but in our materials that we had shared in the file, there was something that said cheat sheet for B, or cheat sheet for.
That's a document that I put together, not Beth.
No, okay, so that document, and I may have just been completely confusing matters, but in there, I got confused reading that where it said 20%, all Springwood Avenue, you know, 20%, and then everything else seemed to have the caveat. I was having trouble understanding how that, that document seemed different than what I was. I was having trouble understanding how that document seemed different than what I was reading in the ordinance.
Well, it shouldn't. And it was ma- I put together, trying to simplify the ordinance. That's why it was called a cheat sheet.
Yes.
And but what it may be confusing is Springfield Avenue was the only zone that already had an affordable housing requirement.
Okay.
So I did a column that was, you know, proposed and existing. So but then I put the elimination of the language that Beth had referred to about the not- that was struck down by the courts, that the creation of jobs triggered the need to have an affordable unit. That got deleted out of the redevelopment plan because the New Jersey Supreme Court had struck that.
That's right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That part makes sense. I think it all makes sense. I'm not sure. I think the middle, there was somewhere where, when I first read it, I thought it was saying the only place, which I know is not true, but I got- I thought that it was saying the only place that had to be 20% was Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan, which I know-
No, that's the only place with the existing.
Existing required.
The cheat sheets are not part of the ordinance. I had put them together trying them for it to be an aid, not to confuse, so I'm sorry.
That's fine. And it won't- no, it helped me, but then I got tripped up. So then, but that's not even- that wouldn't even be- a developer wouldn't be looking at that anyway.
No, the cheat sheet was just for-
It was for us.
Yeah.
It was for us. Because I'd asked for a cheat sheet on that because it was complicated.
Yes, thank you. And then my very last question, well, I think my last question, sorry, showing all this information, but, and D, now we're back to page seven, D, "The payments in lieu of off-site construction must conform with NJAC." That's- so that's saying that we- Asbury Park is just going to do whatever the state requirements are there? I just got confused by that one. I mean, I didn't really understand that.
What that statement is, is it says, "If the city accepts payments in lieu, it must manage those funds in accordance with the applicable rules." So it doesn't talk about- it doesn't grant permission to a developer. It doesn't give- it is not frankly intended to even give guidance to the city about accepting payments in lieu. Instead, what it says is, "If you collect that money, you have to use it and keep it in accordance with the applicable rules," which essentially say you've got to put in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you've got to monitor it, and you've got to use it in accordance with the various standards for how you can expend trust fund dollars. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we go to page 10?
Yeah, well, yeah, perfect.
Okay. Seven, B, and D.
I'm sorry, are we on page 10 of the Affordable Housing Ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, seven, B, and D?
Seven, B, and D.
Yep, okay.
How do you calculate a half-person?
It's a- yeah, that's a good question. That's a statement that you'll see in all of the affordable housing language. It's essentially, wow, when the- formerly the Council on Affordable Housing, now the Affordable Housing Professional Association, when they calculate housing, they do so for a one, one and a half, two, I think two and a half, three, four-person household and so forth. And they do so for the purposes of trying to properly place folks in appropriately sized units. It's about whether or not, because as you can see in here, it says, "A one-bedroom unit shall be affordable to a one-and-a-half-person household." And it's just intended to ensure proper distribution of units. It's a little bit of a black box that I'm not sure I can give you the full technical answer on. But I can tell you, it is specific to the requirements for the Council on Affordable Housing. It's specific to the requirements as part of all of the court approvals. This is not an Asbury Park-specific requirement. That's helpful or comforting at all.
That kind of language in an ordinance, to me, is very troubling because that's something that generates a lawsuit. You know, somebody says, "Well, I'm entitled to one-and-a-half persons. I can't have a half-person, so I'm entitled to two." What do you say to that? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I would- you know, I'm not familiar with any litigation about that. And I feel very confident that the person conducting the income qualification, the Affordable Housing Administrator, is going to be able to properly dissuade somebody that this is somehow an illegal standard. Because it's the same standard that's being applied across the state, and it's the same standard that's been applied for, I don't know, at least 20 years, perhaps closer to 30 years at this point.
If this is truly indication of income, why don't they just say one and a half times the income of one person rather than the person that I have?
That I can't. I- I'm sorry, I can't give you that answer. I just don't know.
Well, you see where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I do understand. It is really awkward language. And I wish I knew the background for exactly why it's- is anybody else, any other planners? I doubt it. Yeah, it's one of these nuances to the Affordable Housing Administration that I really don't- I really can't give you a more technical answer on, I'm sorry. But I can tell you, like I said, it is standard for how HUD conducts its income limits, how COA has always conducted its income limits. And now the folks that are doing the income limits is standard. They've adopted it as part of their format. And that this type of language furthermore is also reflected in the state's housing control rules, the Uniform Housing Affordability Control Rules. It's reflected in there. But the technical reason behind it, I really don't know. But I can tell you, I would be thoroughly uncomfortable if the city deleted this because it would make your ordinance and the occupancy of affordable housing units inconsistent with how it is required to be conducted by the state.
It's got enough explanation for me. One final question.
Sure.
I noticed in, and I can't point to the sections immediately, but there's reference to variances granted by the zoning board. But nothing in connection with variances granted by a planning board?
Because the variances that are going to increase the density or the permitted number of units on a property are most closely associated with the zoning board. So if you think about them granting a height variance, or a density variance, or a use variance to the property versus the maybe, you know, a sideyard setback variance granted by the planning board.
I just, to be consistent, since both boards grant variances.
Yeah, but zoning board only grants Ds, and it's exclusively within the Ds.
Yeah, for the use issues, yes.
The planning board could never grant a variance that would exceed the density or floor area ratio.
Correct, the D variances.
Okay, and I don't remember the context in which I read that, the paragraph concerning the variances granted by the zoning board.
I think that's got to come from the mandatory set-aside ordinance.
Because that's the only place where only one board is mentioned.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I have one question about the B District.
Okay.
Art galleries, art studios, museums, and theaters along Asbury Avenue. Is there any harm with allowing them in the rest of the district?
Well, take a look at the map where the rest of the district is.
Sure.
And think about the current land use patterns there.
Right.
But the reason it's along Asbury Avenue because it goes along with the master plan recommendation.
Right, which is an art district then.
Right.
But what about along Springwood Avenue, that B District? I mean, there's been talk about, you know, some kind of-
Let me explain what occurred. So you see those two little Bs on Springwood? Those used to be in the Springwood redevelopment plan. And previous council, previous planning board pulled them out and said they were redeveloped and no longer subject to the redevelopment plan.
Planning board wouldn't say that.
Well, oh, the last, not the amendment, not the last one I did, the one before I started working here, pulled those properties out.
Okay, right, but in a master plan amendment?
No, redevelopment plan amendment.
Okay.
There was two amendments to Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. One I had done, one that I'd done before I had come to work here.
Okay.
And those two properties got pulled out.
Must have been on the recommendation of somebody that came before the planning board from the city.
So there are standalone B districts?
They're saying B, one is a church and one is some townhomes.
Oh, they're already developed?
They're developed, and that was the logic of pulling- when I say pull them out, it's declared that they were redeveloped and thus were taken out of the plan.
I get what you're saying.
I had a question related to that too, since it came up, because I was not part of the planning board at the time. But I noticed that the permitted uses on Asbury, so no live music. Is live music excluded?
No.
It's just saying it's not, because it has- I know nightclubs and cabarets are excluded, right? And but then there's theater. I was just wondering about the language there, if that's meaning no live music.
No, it's silent to whether or not loud- live music is permitted, but I think with the permission of theaters, and you also permit restaurants in the area, which, actually, I'm going to defer to Michelle as to how you guys regulate whether or not you can have live band inside a restaurant.
You can, because look at all the restaurants that we have that here that have live music, here on Cookman, Porta.
Right, so it's silent, I mean, it's silent. Yeah, this was one with the restaurant part. Thank you.
Oh, that's it. So what questions do the board have? Is there anything else I can answer?
Oh, there was the next steps?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. We skipped to a few questions. So next steps, obviously, is bringing these ordinances to council for their adoption. Beyond that, the city is moving toward its court approval process, which is going to be a compliance hearing before the Superior Court, where we present your housing element, these ordinances as they're adopted, plus a variety of additional appendices and documents for the court's review and hopeful approval. Once you get that, that'll be your official stamp of approval from the court, and you'll have your judgment of proposed from then through July 2025, which means that for that time period, Asbury Park will be deemed to have satisfied its affordable housing obligation.
Just one further clarification. On your original statement, you said there was 290 units that were in need of rehabilitation, I believe. That was calculated as a state formula and not specific?
Correct. Yeah, there was nobody that did a drive-through the city to confirm that number.
Okay, so that if someone comes in to the construction department, gets a building permit to upgrade their plumbing on 13 X Avenue, that might possibly-
No, most likely it will not. So although it's a rehabilitation obligation, it is for rehabilitating units. It's not just simply rehabilitating perhaps a personal home. It's a rehabilitation of a unit which meets certain qualifications, like for example, needing a new building system, like a roof, or windows, or a heating system, for example. Providing funding for that improvement, and then in exchange, having the unit be reserved or de-restricted for low and moderate income households for a period of 10 years or longer. So if Joe Schmo homeowner comes in to apply for a new heating system or new roof, they'll be able to get those permits with no affordable housing implications. But if the city uses its CDBG funds and works with, let's say, a property owner to upgrade their heating system and their new roof as part of participation in that program, and in exchange, receives the money and in exchange applies the de-restruction, then the city will be eligible for a credit against that rehabilitation obligation.
Okay, and does that also apply to the RCA program?
Those are similar activities on the units, but those are two actual different programs. So when we're talking about conducting the rehabilitation program, that's rehabilitating units, so that Asbury Park gets credit. When it's a rehabilitation, the rehabilitation, or excuse me, for RCA, you'll- the rehabilitation will occur, but the other municipality, the sending municipality, will get the credit. That's just simply Asbury Park fulfilling that contract to the other town.
Okay. And you said that the program has to have a de-restruction for 10 years?
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Goals require 10 years in order to be eligible for a rehabilitation credit.
Along with my question about the RCA, if I remember serves me correct, RCA was only a seven-year obligation.
I think it was, in the past, it was six years, I want to say, was the former de-restruction, and now we're looking at 10 years.
Okay.
For the rehabilitation program.
Thank you.
Yes, if we pass ordinances tonight, or what happens?
We don't pass them, but-
Developers who come in tomorrow, are they subject to the ordinances? Or do we have to wait until the judgment has been made?
No, once the city council adopts the ordinances, once the ordinances are effective, they can be applied to developers. You don't have to wait for the court approval.
Okay. Any other questions by the planning board? Any- I do have some to Michael. So do you see that there's any- go ahead.
I just was going to say, if there's public questions-
Not yet.
Okay.
They're coming. They're coming. But I wanted to make sure that what your thoughts were on, if there are any inconsistencies here with the master plan or the housing amendment that we had already passed.
Well, I can say this, that as Beth outlined to you in the- It's a red light. As Beth outlined in the beginning, this began with the reexamination report in 2017, which laid out generalities with respect to housing in the city overall. It specifically relates to those provisions that talked about affordable housing. Even more specifically, once the housing plan element was done in 2019, there are specific references to these particular ordinances. And it's substantially consistent with both the reexamination report in 2017 and the 2019 housing plan element. The things that weren't really discussed in those, but still work to implement those housing policies are the- is the overall Affordable Housing Ordinance and the regulating ordinances that deal with the compliance with the former COA regulations and UHAC regulations.
So you're in agreement that we're compliant, that we're in line?
These ordinances are substantially consistent with your master plan.
Okay, and the housing amendment. Okay. I'm ready to- we're ready to open any questions from the public? Any questions? The questions, remember that the questions have to be on what the testimony was. You will have an opportunity for comment at the end. Three-minute opportunity for comment. Right now, we are accepting questions.
Hi, Patrick Cardone from Second Avenue. I have a question. If you could go to the mandatory set-aside slide, please?
We can't hear you. You go step a little closer.
Sorry.
Thanks.
This is kind of maybe just for my own notification, and maybe it's clear in the ordinance, but I don't understand the second bullet point there.
Oh, the five-plus units permitted or multifamily?
Sorry, the, I guess the third bullet point, the second.
So the ordinance applies to development of multifamily or attached homes. So for example, if somebody was to grab a piece of property and let's say get a use variance to construct seven single-family detached homes, the ordinance would not be applicable. But if they get the variance to do, the use variance to do seven multifamily units, then it would be applicable.
Got it, understood. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
Hello, Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. Hello. My question specifically is, when you speak about mandatory, there's a lot of mandatory use. You're specifically talking about what?
The mandatory part is the set-aside. If the conditions are met, for example, the variance is granted for multifamily housing for five or more units, then the set-aside is mandatory.
Okay, if it's a specific, the specifics say if there is a variance, my question also would be, what if it's just a standard built? Is there any mandatory usage?
No, if you're, if today before these ordinances are adopted, you're allowed to build 20 units, for example. If you come in for a site plan approval with those, with just those 20 units, there will be no affordable housing requirement applied. But if you come in and you get approval for 27 units, then the affordable housing requirement is applied.
So my question is, is there a ordinance- So, uh, my question is, is there a ordinance or any kind of, um, requirements or, um, something coming where there's a mandatory for any build of, say, the twenty? Right, if it's a standard twenty-unit build or a standard, um, a standard hundred-unit build or a standard, you know, two-hundred build?
No, so if it's outside of the areas that we've talked about, the specific areas like the B District or the, the Deal Lake Drive overlay area, if it's outside of one of those areas and a developer comes in, uh, to propose what's currently permitted, there will be no affordable housing requirement. And I did that, uh, because one of the, one of the principles in affordable housing, and the reason why all of these ordinances are structured the way they are, in the sense that you give something before you can take that, take some of the market rate units, is because, is because we have to give what's called a compensatory benefit, we have to be able to allow the developer to, uh, to essentially have a financially feasible project. And so we've, uh, attempted to answer that by only applying the affordable housing set-aside when they've gone ahead to create a project that goes above and beyond what they're already permitted to build.
Okay, so, uh, also, I don't know if it's just standard, so the only, like, um, Jen was saying earlier, the only place that's really mandatory twenty percent is only, is no real inclusionary in any other part or place, there's no inclusionary act anywhere, unless it's Springwood Avenue, that's the only person that actually has a twenty percent, there's no other place in the city.
No. Also, the B District, the B District requires a twenty percent set-aside, I mean, provided you're doing mixed use.
That's, if mixed use, or if you're getting a variance, but there's no on new.
No, in the B District, in this new B District, along, um, parts of Memorial, parts of Asbury Avenue, if you come in with a project for mixed-use housing, it's a, or even if it's, um, straight residential, but if you come in to build ten units after this ordinance is adopted, you will be required to do an affordable housing set-aside. You will be required to have two of those ten units as affordable.
Okay, I was looking through that, and where is that located with the mandatory, because the other wording is kind of optional. The words, if you look kind of option, the only mandatory part is if you have a, um, a variance or something in that manner. But there's no other mandatory language used in, um, those ordinances on new projects.
It says, "The creation of five or more units shall require a twenty percent set-aside of low and moderate income housing." It's simply the creation, it's not the creation via variance, redevelopment, rezoning, et cetera, just the creation, period. So if you create, after this ordinance is adopted, if it's adopted, if you create five or more units, you shall provide a twenty percent set-aside of affordable units.
So that's any new project, any project?
Yeah, five units or more in the B District will require twenty percent.
In the B District, anywhere else in the city on a new project?
What's that?
And Springwood.
Oh, yeah, and, and, yeah, so I've used the B District as an example. If you come in, uh, to the Main Street redevelopment plan, there as well, also Deal Lake Drive, if you utilize their overlay zoning, and then also Springwood Avenue, all of those have a mandatory set-aside of twenty percent affordable housing. The CBD District is optional if you take the height, the additional height that's granted via the ordinance. But there's quite a bit of, uh, of places in the city that are subject to potential change, like the B District, that have the twenty percent affordable housing now required, provided the ordinance is adopted.
Okay, 'cause when I was reading it, it seemed optional or to the variance, and optional to the planning board to, um, at the time. It's, it, the wording seemed, like it said, optional, but you said that it says mandatory for any new builds in these specific areas, but there's no necessarily overall in mandatory inclusionary.
That's, y- yes, that's generally correct. In certain areas, twenty percent is required, and then throughout the city, twenty percent is required if they go ahead and get relief for additional housing than what's currently permitted.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. What is the legal, when you say compensatory, um, that we have to give back? Where is that legally written?
Well, there's no.
Aside for, I'm sorry, aside for zoning, uh, redevelopment or variance, where do we have to, and where is that legally written?
So there's no bright line, there's no bright line standard that says, uh, municipality has to give X in order to require Y. It's, uh, it's more of a softer and subjective standard, but the, it's inherent in the state's inclusionary housing laws that municipalities have to, uh, essentially create a compensatory benefit, they have to give something in exchange for taking it. It's, uh, it's the reason why, I don't want to get too far into the weeds with the rules, but it's the reason why, for example, under greenfield suburban developments, COA has set forth minimum density standards in order to apply the minimum, the affordable housing set-aside of, of twenty percent, say, minimum density of six units an acre. That is not applicable here in Asbury Park, but that's an illustration of how we have a history, uh, a body of rules and case law that sets forth that there must be a compensatory benefit if the municipality is going to require an affordable housing set-aside. I think, I believe that the city would be very vulnerable if you simply took an existing zone and said, "You're permitted to do X now, and tomorrow you can do X with a twenty percent set-aside." I don't think that's a valid use of the municipality zoning, and I think it's going to leave the town vulnerable. And that's, that's precisely what we're trying to avoid here, is to ensure that the city zoning can be upheld, that it can proceed, and the city can do so in a way that creates affordable housing for its residents.
But it, but there's no legal standard set, and I think it's in the compensatory, uh, ability of redevelopment, zoning, or, uh, variance, isn't that a compensatory benefit?
I'm sorry, what's your question? Is the variance, yeah, I do think that a developer that comes in, requests the variance in exchange, and then as a result is required to provide the twenty percent affordable housing. I do think that answers the question as to whether or not there's been a compensatory benefit, and that's precisely why I've structured the mandatory set-aside that way, so that a developer is getting something in exchange for providing the twenty percent affordable housing set-aside.
So we don't have to give parking, or we don't have to give density?
No, there's no, there's no specific standard, it's not as if a, a town has to provide X number of units, or it must be in the form of, uh, a density standard. It's, you have to create, you have to ensure that you're creating a financially feasible project by giving something to the developer to essentially address the loss of, uh, market value because of the provision for affordable housing. So by applying it to only where a developer is receiving the variance, the redevelopment, uh, plan change, or a new redevelopment plan, or the rezoning, we're addressing that, because in those circumstances, the developer is getting something, they're getting all of those things we've already talked about, density, height, floor area ratio, new redevelopment plan, and so forth, in exchange for the affordable housing. We've structured it a little bit differently in other zones, like, for example, with the CBD, where we've addressed it only via height and parking for the affordable housing, but the concept is the same. We're trying, the city's trying to find a way to give something to the developer to ensure a financially feasible project, and then in exchange, extracting, in that case, a fifteen percent set-aside.
Okay, see, what the question is, when you're looking at, and I can give you probably two sites, and I'll give you the first one. One on Asbury Avenue. One, you said giving a developer, we have development that is going through Asbury Park that is, right now, people are creating half a million-dollar units, and no set-asides and no give-backs. And if you have a unit, a, a project that is under the zoning or the requirements, they don't have to meet that requirement. So why are you saying that the city has to give back? That compensatory dam, I mean, compensatory, when there are people who are not, who are going up, meeting the standard, but are making half a million-dollar units?
I'm not sure I understand the question, is the contention that the, that the pro, I, I'm not sure I.
The variance is the gift and not the parking, or?
Right now, in this, in this standing age, in this standing age.
It's not the gift. The variance, any use variance or any other variance has to stand on traditional variance criteria. It's not going to be because it's not, you're going to give you, you're going to give us this and we'll give you that. That's not the way the variances are going to work. That's not the criteria for a variance.
That's not, that's not a criteria, that's not a compensatory benefit, which Beth.
I didn't say that, I said, I'm not, we're not going to start wholesale selling variances because somebody is going to put aside a certain amount of affordable units. They have to, they have to get the variance first, okay? Then, if they do get a variance, based on traditional criteria, okay, for positive and negative criteria, municipal land use law and the case is interpreting that, then if they do get a variance, then if, if there's a required set-aside, then there'll be a set-aside.
What I'm saying, if a project
Yeah.
is built, and it doesn't need a variance, say, uh,
Okay.
a property that wants to create forty units, doesn't need a variance, doesn't need a redevelopment agreement, and, oh, I'm sorry, you're creating sixty units, and it doesn't need a variance and doesn't need a redevelopment agreement, doesn't ask.
They need a redevelopers agreement even if it complies, but go ahead, I understand what you're saying.
So if he says, "I don't, I don't want to put a, uh, an affordable unit in there,"
Okay.
outside of that redevelopment area, do, does he have to do it?
I think the contention is if he builds a project that's fully conforming to the existing zoning, right? Pursuant to the mandatory set-aside ordinance, does he, is he required to provide an affordable housing set-aside? The answer is no. Only if you go above and beyond what the current zoning permits, in a way that creates five or more units, provided we're talking about multifamily or attached housing, then the affordable housing is required. But if you come in with a fully conforming project, unless you're in one of these areas, like the B District, you are not required to provide affordable housing. This does not upset, I'm just going to leave it at that.
No, right, you just said if a person is doing sixty units, meets the, the, uh, standard of the zoning, he does not have to create, and he's creating over, over fifty units, I mean, over five units, he doesn't have to have a set-aside.
That is correct. If you come in, if you are outside of a zone district that we've talked about tonight, and if you're proposing fifty housing units and is fully conforming with the zoning, you are not required to provide affordable housing.
So we don't have a mandatory set-aside?
Thank you.
There's only one place in the city where currently a density like that's permitted, and that's the waterfront, so.
Okay, um, can we have a, uh, a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
And these comments are three minutes? Okay.
So moved.
Okay, all right, we're going for the three-minute comment. We did, we don't really have to close.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to open public comment?
So moved. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, you need to be sworn in?
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and hope you God?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
My name is Elam O'Kancy, last name O-C-A-N-S-E-Y. Very cool. So I'm here on behalf of Fair Share Housing Center, uh, I'm a housing access organizer with the organization, and we are one of the, uh, primary, uh, public interest law firm that is interested in the enforcement of the mount law doctrine, and we're here to present our comments about the proposed affordable housing ordinances. I have them here, transcribed, so I have permission to come up and present them to the.
Yeah, I have them marked in as an exhibit, and, uh, you can pass them out.
All right, thank you.
Just for the record, I'm stopping.
Sure.
So I only have four copies.
Let's get those, have the sonographer mark.
Oh, yeah.
What do you want them to mark as?
I guess I won, it's an interested party.
Okay.
Yeah, just four.
We just need to mark one.
Right, because we're just going, we're going to need, we're going to have three minutes, so we probably won't be able to go through. Do it, so.
Oh, we're gonna.
Why don't we, uh, take our copy?
I think I've seen them.
Have you seen them?
Yeah.
Jack, would he provide additional copies to us, uh? Yeah, we need additional copies if you want all the board members to look at them.
Yeah, we emailed, uh, electronic copy to, um, Michelle, Michelle Alonso. And she could pass that out.
That's my copy, but somebody's welcome to have it.
I'm good, thank you.
So I'll be brief in general, we, we identified five issues that we think are inconsistent with the housing element in Fair Share Plan already adopted by the planning board. And the first one, I want to highlight, the mandatory set-aside that the, the, uh, housing element plan put in place says the, the city will adopt the ordinance that requires multifamily or single-family attached development with five or more housing units resulting from a rezoning, redevelopment, or a variance, variance relief, to have a fifteen percent set-aside for residential and a twenty percent set-aside for, for sale. And this, uh, ordinance was going to ensure that any affordable opportunity, affordable housing opportunities that arise from, um, currently unanticipated, unanticipated developments will be captured by city or board approval. And according to the ordinance here, we only have a set-aside in place when the, uh, residential units exceed the otherwise permitted density. So that's, that's one of the, um, inconsistencies we, we identified with the ordinance that are in front of you today. Moving on to the, the next inconsistency we identified, that has to do with the, with the phasing of the affordable housing, so the regulation requires that as you build affordable housing that have a low and, um, very low income units in place, you, you build, you build, once you have twenty-five percent of the affordable housing, um, uh, once you have twenty-five percent of the market units in place, the next you have to build ten percent. And on the chart there, it identifies how it goes. And as we have here in the ordinance, we don't have that, uh, that regulation established within the ordinance. So that's another inconsistency we found with the, with the Fair Share Plan. Where the Fair Share Plan identified that middle-income units will not address the affordable housing obligation, and that's something that's quoted directly from the, the, um, Fair Sharing Housing Elements Plan. The third thing, the third thing we, uh, we identified is really simple. We had in the, the plan that our permitted building coverage was going to be up to ninety percent, and the ordinance is we only have that up to eighty percent. And that's, that's the third thing. And the fourth thing we have is that a fifteen percent set-aside, as, uh, previously stated, that was, uh, adopted in the plan, would have, would not require anyone who gets, who gets a ten percent or a ten-feet additional, um, a benefit as noted in the, the central business district, um, redevelopment, um, zone. That, that would not be necessary, that'd be an additional benefit. So if you guys wanted to grant that, that'll be up to you, but a fifteen percent set-aside, if it was already in place, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to grant an additional ten, ten feet of extra, extra height. And the last thing is that we had in the plan that where affordable housing is provided, there will be reduced parking standards for non-residential uses. That's, that's specifically quoted from the, from the plan, we had non-residential uses. And what we have in the ordinance is, if you build affordable housing, you wouldn't have to meet certain parking requirements. So, you know, if you have, you have ten units and you only have eight parking spots, you're missing two parking spots for the ten people that live in that building. And, and that doesn't really, doesn't really, um, stand with the, with the plan that you guys were, um, adopted. So that's the last, uh, uh, inconsistency we identified, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for your comment. Anybody else?
Uh, Tracy Rogers. Yes, I do. Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. Um, first, let me, uh, state that it took us a long time to get here, and we're very close. Um, the only thing is, what I rely on our, our involvement from the Asbury Park Affordable Coalition has been the fact that we're going over thirty to forty years of inconsistencies in this development plan, which has gotten us to where we are today. So, we have pushed for, the last ordinance that was, uh, added was the, uh, master, uh, twenty percent set aside, which that wasn't originally in the ordinance that you were gonna get this week, but we got there. Uh, we looked at finding missing opportunities in this city where we have missed over years. So, we're way behind. So, what we're asking for is not just to go forward, but we're remembering that we're trying to make up for a last, a long-lasting history of a redevelopment plan that was not overseen correctly by the city. And to meet those requirements, a lot of people were pushed out, a lot of, a lot of new development was done that did not have great oversight. So, in essence, what we wanna do is finally just get to a point where we can somewhat level this playing field that has been disproportionately set up and has failed this community, to lose a lot of residents, to not fit the, the mission of what we as a city are looking forward to. So, we just ask you to look at these last issues that we have addressed with fair share, who have done this with three hundred municipalities. So, you're looking at the, the people who do the final jobs and make the final decisions, and what their recommendations are, is what they've seen throughout this state, and where, where we're going. So, we partnered, and we hope the city now comes in as the planning board and the city council to meet these obligations with us. Thank you.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Felicia Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S. My comment is to kinda echo, um, what Mr. Rogers said. Um, there's been a lot of work done on every side, and I respect all the work that was done, um, by the planning board. And there's been a lot of work from people out in the community who know the need, the, the loss of thousands of housing units in this city over the last, um, few decades. Um, which are no good, is no fault of your own, most of your, your own, but we have an issue. Um, we stand here not just, um, voices from the community, we stand here with, um, the people that we have to go to to turn in that plan. You have to understand the plan that you sit here, that they wanna submit. The person who is sitting, who has to approve it is the person that just gave you that packet saying they have issues. It's not just us saying that there are issues, um, but there are issues. We were looking for a mandatory inclusionary act throughout the city to preserve for all new housing, for all new building, for all new things, to kinda preserve what is left of the Asbury Park that everyone's come here, um, to live here and to love. We have a responsibility as a community and community members, as board members, to make sure that we keep our city in a way that honors the vision in which we put forward. And in those, in that vision, we sat here with you, um, for the last few years, going over these tedious acts and with your long hours, and I don't think that it reflects some of the things that we spoke about in the meetings and some of the things that you asked, and specific questions that you've asked, um, in this meeting is exactly what was in conflict, um, by, um, the pamphlet that you would just passed. So, I thank you again for doing your diligent job and your, with your diligent questions and your diligent understanding, but we still have a little ways to go. I wanted to come here, I wanted to read these things and say, yes, we finally have something that saved our city, right? But we still have, again, some work to do. So, I thank you again, planning board, um, and everyone in, for taking the time to go through these things, to ask those questions and to do that work, um, but there is still some work to be done so we can stand up and wave it to everybody and say, we did this, right? Because right now, again, this is a working process that we still have to continue to do to make sure that we save the integrity of our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, comment, three minutes, public comment, three minutes.
Comment, not, it doesn't have to be directed to.
No, it's comment.
Comment directed to this.
Three minutes related to what was discussed.
Yeah. Directed to this.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And what's your name?
Ernest J. McNully, four hundred, Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I think I'm in zone what?
Okay.
Deal Lake Drive?
Okay.
Okay. No, I was just wondering, what zone am I?
Oh, uh, what's your address again?
The one where you're gonna allow eight-story buildings, I think?
Okay, you are, okay.
So, what's in the, what's in the, uh, can, can you ask questions too, or just comment?
This is comment.
Oh, just comment.
We're at comment time.
Okay. I always have the wrong thing for the wrong night.
There's a clock going.
Clock's ticking.
I know that.
Okay.
It relaxes me just a bit, you know? So, uh, so I sit in a lot of these meetings, and, uh, I hear things like today, uh, planning boards in, uh, Long Beach Island, all of a sudden they realize they built a hotel with no caffra and no flood permits and et cetera, et cetera. So, my, my, I think my comment is that when you look at the amount of public that shows up in Asbury, it's nothing. And that shouldn't be. All these zones that you're talking about affect us tremendously, and no one's here. And the few people that come see the way it goes, and they just leave. So, yeah. So, the idea is, uh, I've started to do my homework, and I've started to go out to Freehold, I've started to pull files, I Oprah things, and can I tell you something? I think a lot of things that the planning board approves maybe shouldn't be. And like the thing with the caffra in the pool and this with the, uh, and the things that you have going on, I think need more vetting, and there aren't many public, uh, like myself, that are willing to get all the paperwork because when we do get all the paperwork and we do file the Oprahs, and then we come in, we don't have time or the ability to make a, a real factual presentation. Uh, and I thought I heard something about reducing the number of bars. I don't know, named Asbury? I think we're on an increase, not a decrease. I think we're over fifty now. So, uh, did I hear someone say one of the zones is gonna have reduced bars? If that's the case, I'd like to see that. Uh, do I have any time left? Forty-two seconds?
Forty seconds.
Twenty?
Forty.
Forty, that's a long time. So, my point is, I think that these meetings for these important things, for all the zones, should be held in high school with a public here, somehow get everybody here to have an input because this is like shuffleboard, these things get passed like, and then when people find out about it, they say, when did that happen? Eight-story buildings near Deal Lake Drive, where did that? Well, in these kind of meetings where it's kinda, I don't wanna use the word sleight of hand, but it is kinda like sleight of hand. So, that's it. How did I do?
You have three seconds.
Okay, good night, good night.
Any other public comment? All right, motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, from, from what I've, uh, what I've seen is that we're, uh, taking a look, Jack, on, there was one, uh, request regarding the, um, sustainability and the dealing with, uh, the different kind of building materials and whatnot, and we had talked about including that in the zoning ordinance that, um, we're working on currently, so that would not be included here. Uh, we also have a, a request regarding the, uh, the potential of increasing the floor size from ten feet to something higher. Is that something? Sorry?
Building heights?
Yes. There was, uh, there was an increase from, I mean, if they added another four.
I think in the Main Street district.
The Main Street district. It said ten feet.
And CBD?
And CBD.
Yeah, Jim, that was yours?
Yes.
Yeah, I have that down, I have building height Jim Henry, but I don't have the particulars.
Uh, and if you remember, uh, the, uh, application dealing with the Cookman Avenue, I think it was seven hundred, or seven twenty, seven twenty, seven twenty-two, they requested a two-story addition, and by putting those two stories, they went over the normal, uh, four-story height. And I think because of the, uh, increased, uh, building, on the, the ceiling height on the first and second floors of those existing buildings in those areas, uh, when you add another ten foot, uh, you exceed the height, so.
Stories were correct, but the height was incorrect.
Right.
You want some sort of a consistency between the two.
Exactly. And maybe Michelle has some data on, or maybe Beth does, as to what those existing, uh, ceiling heights are in those, uh, existing buildings, so we don't have to have it, the applicant ask for variance.
I understand.
I was just gonna say, I mean, since we don't have all those answers sitting here tonight, it'd be a recommendation back to the governing body that went prior to adoption to consider what the, if the building height is acceptable to accommodate the number of stories they want, or whether they should look at it.
Yeah, at the building height, so, so two of them are consistent.
Yeah, I get what you're talking about, okay. Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Right, it's a recommendation to, to the city council.
We also have two on the, uh, the zoning map, we're gonna.
There're gonna be some changes to the zoning map.
Check out the B one zone, that's over on Sixth Avenue, and it should actually be on the lake, I think. And then, uh, WRA Northern Boundary down by the beachfront should be at, uh, Deal Lake Drive. Not include the triangle by Deal Lake and the ocean.
And I think that, um, Mike also had a couple of zoning map changes.
Yeah.
And what were those?
The scattered site redevelopment plan and the waterfront infill area, um, from the waterfront plan, uh, those areas are missing from the, the new, the updated zoning map.
That was a mistake that you'll correct.
Okay, got that, Michelle?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, I just had a question just to make sure I'm totally clear here before.
Mm-hmm.
So, this language that's, that you shared with me here.
Yes.
The zoning.
That, 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 that's gonna be changed. What, what we're talking about is the future zoning, um, ordinance that we're working on currently.
Right.
And because Jen had some, some concerns about sustainability, the green, making sure the roofs, it, that, that's an option that we can put in there. We had talked about putting those requirements into that document, which is more global than putting it into this ordinance.
And my, so my only thing I wanna make sure that I'm totally clear on is that there doesn't need, so this, that line that I was saying about the roof shape, color, texture, et cetera, does not need to be consistent across.
Right, that's the global. Am I right? That the new, that the new zoning ordinance that we're looking for towards the future, that's global.
Yeah.
That's global.
Right, this is.
That will, that will supersede.
Or it'll, it'll be its own section, and again, 'cause that's a, a design, a planning board design standard, this is more of a variance. So, but yes, we're going to explore that on our next round of zoning ordinance amendments. Which is that? Right, in the same line that's in here.
Yeah. That's the intent, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um.
So, the issues that were brought, uh, from the fair share advocate, uh, the, the phasing in section, where it includes the moderate income?
Yeah, so I think the concern is that the phasing, the way your ordinance is structured, it requires phasing in for the low income, the moderate income, both of those are, um, credit-worthy affordable housing and what fair share housing center is concerned with, but it also requires the phasing in for the middle-income units. And if I'm not mistaken, I think what they wanna do is see the middle-income units excised from the phasing requirement. Uh, I understand that it gives them more certainty that the maximum number of affordable units will be constructed in proportion of the market rate units, but for the reasons that fair share and, and I wanna see the low and moderate income units phased in is the same reason to have the middle-income units phased in. Because, for example, I don't wanna see a project come in and construct the market rate units, the affordable units, and then, oh, they ran out of money, forgot, whatever the case may be, the middle-income units.
Is there somebody who required the low and, and moderate first before the middle to satisfy that requirement? So that, I mean, theoretically, they could say, well, I did the middle and I did the market rate, now running out of money, I don't have to do the low and moderate, and I've already, I've met the.
I, I don't, I don't recommend you do, 'cause I think, first of all, it's, it's gonna be an added complication to the phasing schedule, and it's, um, at the end of the day, it's important that all of the units be constructed, uh, essentially simultaneously or in, or along the same schedule. I don't think, um, I don't think it's a good idea to, to require the affordable units, essentially the, the units that are gonna generate less income for the developer, to be developed much earlier so that then you leave space at the end towards the middle income. It's better to, to ensure.
How can you ensure that?
What's that?
How, how do you ensure that happens?
That the middle-income units and all the units get built.
That they're all built at the.
Because.
They're all built the same.
Because if you have a developer that's proceeding with, say, his market rate units, and what should, what should be happening is the construction official is watching the issuance of certificates of occupancy and whether those COs are for market rate units or affordable units, or perhaps for middle-income units if, if they're in the project. And if he or she sees that the COs are being issued for the market rate units, um, more quickly than what the schedule calls for, they will halt the issuance of any additional certificates of occupancy until those affordable units catch up in terms of being issued certificates of occupancy.
So, this requires oversight by the city to make sure that it's happening?
Yeah, absolutely. This, the phasing requirements in particular, it does put a burden on your construction office to make sure that they're building the affordable units and the market rate units and any middle-income units in, uh, the proper sequence.
You know, what would hurt also to ensure compliance, would make it as part of the conditions of approval, the resolution for resolution compliance, put that in there?
Okay.
Help also as, as a backup to what the city's gonna bring.
As a matter of course, any affordable housing obligations will be in, in, in the resolutions.
Exactly.
I mean, I could certainly, I mean.
Specifically.
I'm certainly interested where they're coming from with that.
I'm absolutely.
Yeah. And there was a comment earlier about, um, whether or not folks would know to do the very low-income units, for example. And it's the same issue. Every time you issue an approval with, uh, that provides for affordable housing, you wanna be pointing to and referencing the city's affordable housing regulations that specifically call out very low, low, middle, uh, moderate income, maybe any middle-income units in all of the, the various regulations that go along with it. So, that, that's gonna be, uh, conditions that you'll hopefully see in every project approval.
They would become standard conditions in any affordable housing project.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I didn't notice in the ordinance itself, but I know that, I remember that you said that, that during, on the site plans, that, that, that the developers should note which one, units are the affordable units? I don't think we do that today. I haven't seen that. Is that actually in the ordinance? Or is that something that we, as, as a planning office, need to ask them?
It, it, you know, it, it doesn't happen because nobody's doing it, right?
No, I, I'm, but.
That's the simple answer.
Well, actually.
But it could be, it could be made part of the checklist.
That's what we need.
You could make it as part of the checklist.
That's what I'd like to make sure that, we add that to the part of the checklist.
Because you're dealing in three dimensions very often with the multifamily. You're dealing with three or four, five stories.
That's right, 'cause I don't, 'cause we did have one recently, I wasn't at that meeting unfortunately, but I don't, I don't recall ever seeing it, but I think that we just need to make that part of the list.
And they did.
That should be part of the list.
Oh, you did? Okay, so they did. My bad.
So.
Go ahead.
Uh, for the, for the first comment from fair share, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, I understand that we in our fair share plan adopt, you know, adopted the, the requirement for, or the, you know, the suggestion to do an ordinance with five or more housing units. But, I, if, to me, it looks like, I don't believe that there are, by right, in the other zones that are not included in these ordinances, any opportunity to build five or more units, right? I mean, most of them are single-family zones, R-two zones, um, so I guess I'm trying to understand if, if that comment is even relevant.
I mean, I think it's relevant, but, uh, but I think the issue is, I mean, it's a couple of things. So, one, what's the impact of it? How many, uh, you know, how many approvals are gonna be potentially issued in locations that are already permitted to do multifamily housing? that are already permitted to do multifamily housing and don't have, and don't have an affordable housing set aside? So that's, that's to your comment.
Right.
I think that's one. The other thing I did want to point out, for the sake of consistency, is one of the things that we did change that's, that is, that I didn't pick up on from initially speaking with Fair Share is, in our housing plan, we said that we would require a 15 or a 20% set aside as part of this mandatory set aside ordinance. 15% when the affordable units are for rents and 20% where they're for sale. One of the additional deviations that wasn't, wasn't highlighted is that instead of requiring 15% under some circumstances, this ordinance requires 20% across the board. So I think that's, that's certainly a positive thing toward producing additional affordable housing in, in one small way than what was anticipated in the housing plan.
Good. Any, any other questions? Any other, any other conditions for Mr. Serpikoff?
Senator, we have to, since Beth testified additionally.
Yes.
We have to open it across just limited to that specific testimony.
Okay. Open for public questions on those specific statements.
Only what she just said.
Only what she just said.
Not 20%.
Move to close.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else from, we're good? All right. Can I get a motion to, 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 to recommend this application be accepted based on the conditions that were put forward?
Right, and substantially consistent with the master plan?
Yes.
So, and rec, following respectful recommendations made to the governing body.
Right, and the, and not only the master plan, but the housing?
Which is part of the master.
Which is part of the master plan, but I like to.
It's be specific.
We just want to be specific. Okay? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Piltz woman Evan Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Trudy Seifach?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krizet?
Yes.
Thank you. Recommendation approved.
Okay. All right. Move to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Solomon Evan Clayton?
Here.
Mayor John Moore? Jim Henry?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Trudy Seifach?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Barbara Krizet?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, the only thing we'd like to announce is that we're recommending that the meeting on the March 23rd be canceled. Planning board meeting will be canceled on the 23rd due to lack of applications.
Don't tell your job.
I won't, don't tell your job. All right, motion to close?
So moved.
Motion to cancel?
Oh, motion to cancel the meeting, oh my goodness.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
Mike's motion to adjourn?
Second.
What happened? You don't want to cancel?
No, no, we're good. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
There's more?
No, there's no more. Mike's motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.